Begin with the pledge of allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we move to citizens to be heard, we have one, one bit of business to take care of. We have Counselor Stube via Zoom. I'll need a, a motion to permit Counselor Stube to, to attend the, the meeting via Zoom.
So moved.
Motion by the Deputy Mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon, I imagine there's no discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. No one wants to keep you out, Jeff, you're, you're, you're with us officially.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay. Uh, move on to, uh, citizens to be heard. If there are, and if there, there's anybody here in attendance who would like to, uh, make any comment on borough business, you may, uh, walk up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. Is there anybody looking to make any comment? No, do we have anybody by Zoom other than Counselor Stube? No, okay. Uh, then I'll entertain a motion to, to, uh, review and approve the March one, twenty twenty-three workshop meeting minutes. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
A motion by the Deputy Mayor is a second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon, just, just in under the wire. Uh, any discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And economic development, Mr. Ramsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item tonight. Um, it's an action item. Um, so I'll make a motion and then we'll open it up, uh, to some discussion. Make a motion that Borough Council may consider executing a contract with Delta Development Group for grant advocacy services in the amount of eight thousand five hundred dollars per month, plus expenses, subject to review and approval of the agreement by the borough solicitor.
Is a motion to execute the contract with Delta Development, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Perry. I will not call the question. I know we have a couple of representatives, one, one we know well. Uh, resident of the borough, would you like to provide some, some comment before we, we do the official vote?
Mayor, members of council, executive team, thank you, uh, for inviting us here. We were asked to just offer a three, five-minute overview. So I'll start. Uh, my name's Christian Munis, uh, two fifty Walnut Street, Carlisle. Um, we appreciated the opportunity to respond to the RFP and, uh, the packets you have this evening are the packets we put together for the interview committee. And, uh, it was a little bit more expansive than just our, our, RFP. What I, what I hoped to do to spur conversation was offer a couple of examples of clients we've worked with over the past, uh, five to ten years that I thought offered some reasonable overlap, uh, for everyone to consider. Uh, one being Lafayette College, and although it's a college, they have a strong town gown relationship. And so we do a very active work in the downtown of Easton and work actively with their, uh, mayor and members of council. Uh, and then secondly, Cranberry Township, uh, because it's municipality, but we do a lot of transportation work in it and offered some examples of not just state funding, but also, uh, federal funding, uh, through US Department of Transportation and, and other agencies. And then in tab two, uh, the highlight there was just to offer an idea of, uh, uh, how we approach a, a client. There's three pages there. The first one is sort of a living document, how we view the world when we're initiating, uh, a client relationship. There's going to be, um, a lot of different interests perhaps, uh, and a number of priorities you want to consider. So we try to, uh, first understand all of that, but then offer insight as to how that matches up with what we see coming in, in, in the next quarter, the next six months, the next twelve months. So, so that's why this packet was designed the way it was. Also in tab two is the example of how that kind of overview progresses over time. And so the second and third sheets in that tab are actually, uh, uh, work we're doing currently, uh, in Easton with Lafayette College. So we've now refined the focus to their interests, uh, more multimodal, more environmental-related, uh, incentives that they're pursuing. And then you'll also see where at this point, eight years in, we're also making sure they're aware of what their match requirements are. Because although they could probably go for another half dozen types of funding, uh, they have to, uh, determine from a budget perspective, is it time to tap the brakes, uh, so we can meet our match requirements and finish projects a- and, and then determine when they want to move forward. A- and so those are examples of, of how Delta approaches this type of work. Uh, although we do more than development, uh, that's probably our core business and what we focused on with our discussion with the interview committee. Uh, I, at Delta Development, I'm a senior associate. I've managed a number of clients. During the interview, uh, process, I thought it made sense to bring, uh, two of my colleagues, Rebecca Burke, who's our Vice President for Development and Rick Rossi, who's our Senior Vice President for Development. They also manage very similar clients to me. And, uh, uh, if I could, I'll just ask both to briefly introduce themselves. And then if there are any questions, we're happy to answer those questions.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rebecca Burke. Like Christian said, I am a Vice President at Delta and I primarily work under Development Services. I've been at Delta for about seven years. I do a lot of market analysis, economic analysis, financial projections, tax assessments, um, geospatial, so GIS work as it relates to public funding. Uh, most of my work is public funding. I work with public and private entities. I've worked with Lafayette College for six years, the city of Easton. I work with municipalities like Cranberry Township. I also work with nonprofits, um, human service providers. So I'm very familiar with federal funding, um, uh, private foundation funding. How do you take federal funding and match it with local and state and private dollars to get the best, um, return on your investment? Um, I would be working with Christian as well and primarily would be helping to identify funding for you and to apply for grant applications.
Hi, good evening. Uh, Rick Rossi, Senior Vice President with Delta Development Group. I've been with Delta for over twenty-one years now. As a company, we've been in business for over thirty-five and at our cores, helping communities identify their economic development, public works, parks, infrastructure needs, and then actually go out and make those goals a reality by finding the funding. We've been doing it successfully for thirty-five years. We're headquartered right down the road in Camp Hill. We really appreciate the opportunity to, uh, compete for your business and we look forward to working with you. Uh, so you've met just a part of our team. We have over thirty-five professionals. And while Christian will be your project manager and point to point, he'll be able to reach in to different professionals, whether it's on environmental, parks, historic tax credits, planning, transportation, and pull those people in and out of your project team to make sure you have your best representation. So thank you again for the opportunity and, uh, we're here to answer any questions you still may have.
Does Council have any questions?
Uh, I do. I just want to point out, I don't think that Council is seeing the one, uh, that you brought, brought along to the presentation with the tabs. Um, I only see the one, the original RFP on, on the, um, on the drive here. Okay. Oh, you, the, okay, they have another copy. All right. Um, yep. I was, um, really impressed with all of the different types of work that you had done with Lafayette College and, and in partnership with, um, Easton. And, and it's a, a great sort of parallel to what I think we can achieve, um, in Carlisle, so.
When you said Cranberry Township, it just reminded me that I had looked it up before and they are a form-based codes, uh, town. So it's the one place, not like we're going that way, but we have discussed it. So, um, it's good that you have some insight into different places.
Anything further? Okay. Thank you very much for coming out, um, and, and I know it's a, you know, excellent company that we'll, we'll be partnering with. And it's a comfort to know that we have a resident who can drive down the street and complain if we, we're not getting what we want, so. We, we already knew exactly where he was, but, uh, thank, thank you all. Um, I will, I will call the question. Um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Uh, that ends, that ends my report, thanks.
Okay, parks and recreation.
I move that Council approved change order number four for additional work at Lot D Park area of the Fairground Avenue Linear Park. The total price for change order number four is thirteen thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. An increasing land serve and total contract price to seven hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. The change order also extends the contract ending date to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
A motion to approve change order number four for the additional work at Lot D in the Fairground Avenue Linear Park. I will second that motion. Is there any question or comment? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had, uh, it was just a question about, um, because the Lot D is taking a little bit longer, uh, just a question of when the, um, work would start and then also the work that still needs to be completed around skate park. I just wasn't sure if there was an update on time. I didn't see an exact timeline in here.
Yeah, I don't have an exact timeline after, um, if this gets approved, I'll contact, um, Landserve and then we'll figure out when they'll come back for their spring work. But yeah, we have.
So they would probably be doing them, what, I guess my question is, would they be doing both things at the same time?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, comment? I have to remember to pause a little bit, Counselor Stube too. There's that delay. Okay. Um, then I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Thank you for your report. Finance Committee, Counselor Stube, are you comfortable doing that by, by Zoom or would you like Counselor Ramsey to take that?
I, I think I'm good. Um, I have one item this evening. I move that Borough Council approve the temporary funding of three hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to the solid waste fund to help cover funding requirements related to cash flow delays.
Motion to approve the temporary funding from the general funds, solid waste fund, the amount of three hundred thousand dollars, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Ramsey. Any question or comment?
Um, I, I did just want to, um, add or, or as a point of clarification, um, state that essentially the requirement to pay the trash vendor, uh, under the new contract at the end of the quarter doesn't directly align with the borough's utility billing schedule, which kind of creates a delay. And that's what necessitates this, um, temporary, uh, cash flow, uh, change to, to cover these, uh, expenses. So it's expected, um, and, 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 uh, just wanted to provide a clarification.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Then I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stube. Um, Public Safety Committee, I move that Council approve an amended special events application for the Northside Ride Community Bike Ride on April first, two thousand twenty-three with a rain date that will not be necessary, of April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from nine AM to one PM. Approval is contingent upon the receipt of a valid certificate of liability insurance form naming the Borough of Carlisle as an additional insured and the applicant reimbursing the borough one hundred percent of the variable and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with this event. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hicks. Any discussion? Obviously, this already took place. We're ratifying, uh, action that, that needed to be, uh, taken prior to the meeting. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. That would have been awkward if that didn't pass. To travel in the past. Uh, Public Works Committee, Counselor Perry.
Um, so it says here, um, staff update. So for the Bedford Street and East Penn Street intersection?
All right, I, I'd be happy to do that. Um, at the March eighth Town Hall meeting, uh, there was a presentation by Dawood and a copy of the, um, schematic is on the screen, uh, regarding the proposed improvements of the intersection, five-point intersection of North Bedford, East Penn and Kerr Avenue. There was, uh, discussions at, at the, um, workshop meeting, but there really wasn't any, uh, suggested changes to that. Um, so, uh, after that meeting, um, I tentatively told the, uh, consultant, uh, that pending any further comments from Council, uh, they should be prepared to start the design, uh, with a schedule of coming to Council, um, at the May meeting requesting approval to, um, seek construction bids based on the design as shown in the, in the schematic. Uh, with, with the schedule then being, um, receiving bids for the June meeting and then, uh, issuing the notice to proceed in July, uh, with construction likely to be completed by, uh, the end of September. Uh, i- is the tentative schedule, uh, but that's, uh, based on whether or not Council would like to continue to proceed with this, with this process or if Council has any suggested changes to the, to the, um, to the, uh, design as shown in the schematic.
We've seen this design a couple of times now, at least, uh, most of us were able to attend the, the Town Hall. Is there any question, comment, suggestions from, from Council?
Um, I, I did just want to, uh, state that I, I appreciate the, I, I know from the very initial design, um, there was a mid-block crosswalk, um, further back on East Penn Street, uh, and, and after some discussion, that was changed to be more at the intersection. Um, I, I appreciate that, that change in the redesign by Dawood. I think that will make, uh, that pedestrian crossing a little safer as just, you know, from living at this intersection, I, I can state that most people end up crossing at the intersection. Um, and I, I think there would probably create some confusion to have a, a, a cross, um, in the middle of the block on East Penn Street. And, uh, there would still be a number of people that would likely cross at the intersection when vehicles wouldn't expect it. So I, I appreciate that, that change, um, having been made. Um, but I, I just wanted to, just wanted to state that.
Thanks, Counselor Stube. Anything else? Okay, seems like we're going to keep cruising along.
All right, uh, thank you.
Roll right into, uh, Noble Boulevard.
Okay, um, uh, Borough Council, uh, heard a presentation at the February workshop meeting, uh, regarding, uh, some, uh, proposed safety enhancements at Noble Boulevard, Noble Boulevard being between West Ridge Street and South Hanover Street. Uh, Noble Boulevard is, is about fifty feet wide and it's a four-lane highway. Um, and, um, it is proposed to be, uh, repaved this, this year. Prior to the repaving, staff took a look at, uh, the highway alignment and, um, a number of other issues and made a recommendation to Council at the, at the February workshop that is part of the repaving project. Um, we were recommending, uh, certain safety enhancements that would, uh, in, include reducing the paving width uh, along the western portion of the road to reduce it from four lanes to two travel lanes. Uh, and to put in a dedicated, uh, ten-foot-wide, uh, bike lane along the north, the north, uh, side of the highway. And also, uh, make certain, uh, alignment changes, uh, from West Street to South Hanover Street. Uh, since that presentation, uh, staff has had an opportunity to go out and do some additional, uh, traffic counts, uh, specifically counts related to, uh, turns, left-hand turns, uh, from the westbound lane of Noble Boulevard, uh, into the Carlisle Commons Commercial Development at the, um, at where the Chick-fil-A restaurant is. And, uh, what we determined was that during the peak hour, which is typically around lunchtime, about half of the trips, uh, heading westbound turn into that lane, uh, turn into that private driveway and then go into the Carlisle Commons to whatever, um, establishment, uh, they're traveling to. Uh, so based on, uh, based on that and also based on, uh, just looking at, um, the alignments and proposed alignments, uh, were suggesting some, some, uh, changes to that, to, uh, what was presented in February. Uh, the first was, um, can you go back one? Uh, the, the first was, uh, between, uh, Penrose Place and, and West Street. We previously recommended, uh, putting in a vegetative strip, so a, a curb bump out, uh, all the way from Penrose to West in the eastbound direction. Uh, however, uh, because of the way that alignment would, would, uh, would be in relationship to the, to the, uh, westbound traffic, um, we're proposing to reduce that, uh, vegetative strip to provide essentially a through lane heading eastbound, uh, that could also make a right turn into Carlisle Commons and a dedicated left-hand turn so that, uh, the left turn lanes, uh, in both the eastbound and westbound directions align. So when someone pulls up to the intersection, they're looking directly at a vehicle that is making the same left turn, you know, that they're making for, the, the, the same turning, uh, movement that, that they're making. Uh, that, that was the first change. A- and the second one, if, if you go to the next slide, uh, was to put in a dedicated left-hand turning lane, uh, in the westbound, uh, lane, uh, from South Hanover Street to the driveway, uh, into Carlisle, the first driveway into Carlisle Commons. So the, the, uh, structure, uh, just to the south of, of that road is, that's the Chick-fil-A. And, and that really generates, uh, a, a lot of vehicle trips, especially during peak hour. Um, so as opposed to having a one-lane, um, as was, was previously recommended, uh, we would continue to have four travel lanes, uh, along that stretch, uh, with, uh, one being a dedicated left turn into the driveway, uh, the other westbound lane being, uh, straight through. And then i- in the eastbound, uh, there would be a dedicated right-hand turning lane, similar to what's there now, and a dedicated, uh, through or left turn lane. So, uh, compared to existing, we have four twelve-and-a-half-foot wide lanes. Uh, we would reduce that, uh, to four, uh, ten-foot-wide lanes and then, uh, have a ten-foot-wide dedicated bike, uh, lane along the western side of, or excuse me, the northern, uh, side of, of, of Noble Boulevard. So those are essentially the changes from what we previously, uh, had provided. Any questions or comments about those suggested changes?
Thanks, Mark. Um, can you scroll back to the previous slide? So I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm just curious if your study, if you did an assessment going eastbound, um, between Penrose, where you tried to align the left, is there enough space? I, I don't know what the percentage of cars turning left versus going straight, but I see the potential of there being a, a queue for propensity of cars going straight. Um, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, uh, the, the, the number of vehicles heading eastbound, uh, from either Penrose or from West Ridge there. So that, that's, right now, it's, it's a four-way stop. Um, and, um, the number of vehicles, uh, currently making that, uh, eastbound is, is relatively small. It's, it's, it's much smaller than heading, heading in the other direction. So, um, the, the, um, the proposed, uh, length of, of that dedicated, uh, lane would be approximately, uh, three vehicles long. Uh, which, um, shouldn't be a problem with, uh, the, uh, traffic cons that we've seen there.
Thank you.
Mark, on, on that one, so i- is it currently, uh, uh, just looking at it, there's a potential for six cars to be at the four-way stop? Is that how it currently is as well?
Uh, currently, there's a potential for two, two, four, six, uh, s- six, seven, eight. So, uh, one, one vehicle coming, uh, southbound on, on West Street. So, so the number of vehicles at that, that potentially could be at that intersection would be, uh, one vehicle heading southbound on West Street. Two vehicles heading northbound from the driveway, one making the right and one potentially making the left.
Okay.
Uh, and, and, um, two lanes heading westbound and two lanes heading eastbound.
Is, I'm just thinking safety-wise. I'm, I'm not advocating for a light there, but at, at some point, does it make sense? I mean, that seems like a lot of cars navigating a four-way stop, also with a bike lane, right? So do we, when you guys were out there doing the data and I don't know if, if there'd be police data, do we see many incidents there? Or is it because it's a stop, it's slow enough that people can navigate that?
Um, so there, there is, uh, a table in the, um, in the memo, uh, which gives a history of reportable accidents over the, uh, the period from twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-one uh, for the, uh, four intersections of Noble and Hanover, Noble West, Penrose and Ridge. And, um, uh, these are reportable accidents. So the difference between a reportable accident and just an accident is, um, that, uh, there was, there was a vehicle that could, that needed to be towed or someone was injured, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And, um, the, the majority of the, of the accidents that have occurred there, uh, uh, have been folks running through the stop sign.
Okay. Uh, and then it just, last question I see in the report, is the plan still to protect the bike lanes with some sort of?
Right, so, uh, uh, what, uh, we've secured some pricing, uh, for essentially a, um, a flexible vertical barrier. Um, and there's a photo in the, um, that I didn't ask, um, Stephanie to put up, but it, uh, it's essentially a, um, a PVC tube that, um, that, uh, would go down if it was hit, but provides at least a visible, uh, barrier between, uh, the travel lane and the bicycle lane. So, so the proposal is that there would be approximately a three-foot-wide strip that is thermoplastic down with, uh, horizontal, uh, horizontal striping and then in the middle of that, uh, the, um, the flexible vertical barrier. Uh, so it's, it's not a barrier that would stop a vehicle, but it's a barrier that provides a visual, a visual separation between, uh, bicycle and, and a, um, and a, and a motorist.
Great, thank you.
Um, so I did have a question about those, uh, some, I mean, I know that we are in, you know, other cities, but a, a friend of mine talked about just some of those being put into their city and within about a week, most of them were mowed down. Um, so, I mean, it's just, it's also the cost, right? So if, if they do get damaged, um, uh, so I guess the question is, could, was it evaluated to put any, at least, uh, like, maybe not on all of them, but bollards, like actual, like, something, something that is, um, in the, yeah. Substan- right, so, um, especially maybe on the first, you know, entry of the, of the road or periodically.
Uh, we, we looked at, um, not bollards, but, um, essentially a curb, a concrete curb that would go in. And have, um, so one option would be to replace those with, with a concrete curb. And, and we've essentially, uh, tripled the price by, by doing that. So i- it's, it's a sort of.
So that's why I was thinking periodic, I mean, it could be that we start with this, but I also, you know, the, the, the problem with these sort of processes is that once it's done and then we, you know, they get mowed down and we've paid, you know, invested the funds. So I'm just, I'm trying to be cost-conscious, but also, um, you know, the people that run the stop sign are the ones that are going to like go around someone and be like, that's not going to ruin my car. And, you know, so those are the, uh, you know, just the reality of what people, some people think. Um, but I'm not sure how dur- I mean, it does say, uh, with durable upgrade channelizer posts. So what, I don't know what durable, what the, what that means. I just know that some places they are not as durable as what, um, a larger vehicle takes.
Right, so, uh, the, the, the one that was selected there was ones that are used a- along, um, essentially the, uh, a highway where folks are going. uh, of highway where folks are going uh, at, at least fifty-five miles an hour. Uh, so they would, if a vehicle hits that, it bounces and comes back. I don't know how many times uh, that bouncing would occur, but
Could we buy one and just run it over a bunch of times?
If, if you'd like to do that, we could arrange for that.
Okay. I'm, I'm kind of, I'm joking, but I'm also not like, just just to see, because the, the reality of it, I just wanted to, I wanted to do what it's supposed to do, right? So that's it. Um, and my only other comment is a comment from someone that had messaged me after I wanted to just change it. Um, after we had initially discussed it, um, hold on one second, I've lost my place. So uh, they were asking about, um, and I know this isn't exactly along that, but the, but the cat bus goes through there. Um, it, it said it would be great to see secure bicycle parking at the park and ride location. This person goes to Harrisburg and uh, um, the park and ride location is a bit of a long walk from where they live. Um, uh, but if they could bike and have secure long-term bike parking there, the express buses that CAT uses, use don't have front racks um, to take your bike with you either. So secure bike parking would also be great at the bus stop in front of, oh, he said in front of the courthouse as well, but since we're talking about Noble Boulevard. But that was, I, I understand that there might be a, a bike rack at Walmart. Um, and I don't know exactly where CAT drops off, but this is where, talking to the county, talking like Walmart and public-private partnerships of thinking of what we're investing this bike route, we would like more people to take transit. Um, and maybe getting a little creative about how we could um, give some secure, maybe even covered. I know, that's an extreme thought, but um, but those are, those are just some, some thoughts if we could uh, um, maybe that's not with this exact bid, but in the process, I think that would be a, a good addition.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say thanks for taking a second look at that um, first intersection there with the private drive.
I don't know if this was part of the process, but um, it, would, would it be helpful to sort of map this out in a, like a breadboard? Like with fake thing and just see how the patterns uh, they're replicating the way that we think they would before we actually start pouring concrete. And basically set us, set aside the way this was configured for a period of time just to um, get, get a, convince ourselves our modeling was correct.
Like with cones?
Sure. With cones?
Even like in reality?
In reality.
Right. Okay.
Uh, for uh, only for, for the entire um, uh, corridor or um, for a, for a specific park?
You could do it incrementally. My, my guess is this slab right here is probably the most um, complex, um, and, and just convincing ourselves it, it's gonna function the way we think it will before we commit. I would not be opposed to creative ideas of doing that.
Is there, is there, I guess the follow-up question to that is, is there a way to do that that's, that's navigable by a typical driver, right? Because that, that would give us good data. I mean, putting cones up, that's gonna, you know, people react to cones differently than they do made to paint on the, on the street.
Well, I guess what I was saying is it'd be similar to how you would set up a work, work setup. So like the whole right side, that's the bike lane, set, setting that up like a works zone or whatever equipment. Maybe it's not a full replica, but at least we get some, some sense that it's operating the way we think it will.
That, that section in particular is all, right, that's just paint.
That, 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 correct. That'll be all paint.
Well, and the, and the durable, whatever they're called, channelizers.
Yeah, the um, you know, the, the change in the width of, of the highway i- is only uh, from west to, to ridge. And, and that certainly can, uh, you know, in order for, in order to do this, uh, we would need to close those anyway to excavate. Um, but I, I'm, I'm just, I'm thinking of uh, of the impact that that would have in order to do, in order to have this uh, function. It's gonna require closure of the road for a, for a time period and painting the existing lines and then repainting those. Um, and that's gonna have a um, bit of an impact on the, on that commercial uh, space.
Give your mic, your mic.
No, I was just, I was, I'm thinking about um, where it is, because unfortunately I spend way too much time going to Walmart. I'm trying to stop that. But, but, you know, because whenever I go, I take the Penrose instead of west. So I get off of West Street, but then I turn on the Penrose because it's just easier for me to get to where I wanna go. But that is a, it's a small, it's a small area compared to like the rest of it, I guess. Um, but it's a, but it's busy always. Like it doesn't matter what time of day, that area is always busy. So I don't know. I, I mean, I'm not opposed to what you're saying. I can't, I can't imagine. Right now, I can't imagine any of it until I see it. Um, but it is, it, yeah, I don't know. That, that area is um, small and can be congested, especially around lunchtime. So I don't know.
Uh, I have a question just related to um, timeline. Um, would there be enough, I mean, so, so if I'm not mistaken, the proposal would be for us to, as a council, consider action on this in May so that work could be um, completed when the road surfacing is occurring later this year? Is, is that correct? Would there, would there, and if so, would there be enough time if we had additional discussion or consideration of this, um, and didn't approve it until like June, for it still to occur this year? Or would that kind of um, delay things to the point that it wouldn't be feasible to do? Uh, just, just out of curiosity and kind of the proposed timeline for the work?
Yeah. So um, sequentially, what would occur would be the first thing, uh, the borough's public works department would um, go um, and excavate those two uh, landscaping areas. Uh, so close, close lane, uh, re- relocate traffic uh, from west to Penrose, excavate and then have a contractor come in and, and put in new curbing. And um, we would need really to be able to do that uh, in late May i- in order to have the concrete in place cured and uh, and uh, and base pavement down before um, the, the paving contractor comes at the end of the summer. It's gonna take a while. So I would say that if we um, delayed it, we, we, we likely would not be done. Uh, there's also some pedestrian curb ramps work that needs to be done uh, as part of that. So in the um, at the workshop, excuse me, at, at the council meeting next week, uh, we did open bids for a um, a unit price contract to do pedestrian curb ramps for this year and also to do uh, curb extensions. Uh, it's a unit price contract, so we can, you know, we have some flexibility there if, if you don't want to proceed with that. Uh, but um, uh, in speaking with the contractor, they likely will be starting June first, and it would take them from June first until uh, paving season to uh, complete it.
And, and to go back to Counselor Hicks' suggestion, if the concern is not, I mean, these areas obviously that we're seeing right now with the rain gardens, that's quite per-, well, relatively permanent where the other sections are painted. If there's not a concern about those sections, um, and the primary concern is, is this initial area west, westbound um, by the, by the Chick-fil-A, and that's really only, only paint. Let's, just gonna throw a hypothetical, if that doesn't function properly and we need to revert to something else, how does that impact things down, down the road?
Yeah, I, I don't think it really ha-, the, the, the only impact would be um, to the bicycle uh, lane and um, potentially narrowing that. Uh, you know, we, we have four lanes there now. And we're gonna have four lanes in the future. It's just that the lanes are narrowed a little bit. So I, I, you know, I, I, it, it's not a major um, I, I, I don't see it as, as, as something that's um, gonna, gonna result in, 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 um, you know, mayhem or something.
All right. So then, so then i- the consequence of that would, would be we perhaps just have to narrow the bike, the bike lane in that area, then it expands di- westb- westbound at that point. So then again, it's really paint and it's those channelizers in that area that would need to be adjusted. Um, and so I don't, I don't know that there's a great, great need given all that to, to do a test run that might not give us good data anyway, because the people may react differently to, to paint than they would to whatever we set up to test run it, unless someone thinks differently.
No, just to re- remind me, like, the first time, was it that that entire inner lane, the turning lane was not full and that it was? Cause what was the adjustment on here?
There were only three lanes.
Oh, there, there were only, oh, okay.
There were three lanes and, and we brought it back to four.
Right. So because of Chick-fil-A truck, right? Well, in that case, I mean
So the difference between that and what we have now is uh, the, the, the second lane heading westbound is not a dedicated left turn, although um, most people making left turns.
So I would say that um, there probably wouldn't be a need to shrink the bike lane. It's really the same. Just everyone's gonna get used to being a little bit skinnier car-wise.
Your idea, I mean, child bollards, uh, I mean, could we put up a couple right there when people take their left off Hanover? Just as a, a marker and to see how much
They knock them down?
Yeah. Cause that's probably the most vulnerable area and just setting up a couple to see how that goes.
All right. We certain can do that.
I like the animation part of this a whole lot more than putting that. We could probably, if we could animate this thing some way and try and see how it works.
They can hear me.
Council steward care.
The, the, the idea of, of, I was just hitting Mark saying, hey, could we possibly do a mock-up and animation of this thing? My, my reason why is that we can't think about people's reactions. People's reactions are gonna be, we can't judge that. We could put it up today, it'll be one way and next time it'll be another way, if, if, if I may. It's not my deal, but I was thinking to myself that, that if we could figure out a way to, Mark's almost a genius at drawing things to scale, you know, and, and, and it just moves the little cars to try it as opposed to, to trying it on real people, on real cars. Uh, just a suggestion, um, that if we could do that, it could save a lot of time and money. And if we uh, this way, as I said, you can't judge people. You can't judge how people are gonna judge things. You know, everyone reacts differently. Some people hit the brakes, some hit the gas, some turn. And anything can be something different. So just a suggestion, sir.
I agree, and that's why I like bollards.
Pardon me?
That's why I like the, the structural bollards that would, you know, prevent, like if someone actually decided to take that turn really fast and blaze into the bike lane, then, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a safe route to school. You know, those kids are, go to uh, La Torre. And so that's why, um, you're right. And that's why some of the infrastructure in key places where it's the most vulnerable for vulnerable humans, I think, is worth the investment. Um, and also this is the same question that we've had, like at High and Hanover, that technically that turning radius for large tractor trailers is not in line with PennDOT's own manual. So I don't know that a turning radius there is actually in line for tractor trailers. So these are some things that like, if we put infrastructure in um, that, you know, aligns back with um, you know, standards, then we, you know, we're, we're in our right, but we're also looking at our vulnerable humans and maybe, you know, people have to take your time and, and angle differently.
I'm sorry, the, the, how many left-hand turns are going left on Hanover? And how many dedicated left-hand turn lanes are on Hanover turning left? One or two?
Left, turning left onto Noble?
From, going north on Hanover? Okay. Well, actually, there's just that one, right?
No, no, there, there's, there's one at uh, Willow, Willow.
So I'm, I'm actually looking, i- is, is the lane to the left of the red line the only left-hand turn lane? Okay. Good. Um, it seems to me like we could maybe move that left-hand turn a little bit further west so that we have like a sizable single lane to come into without committing to a right or a left-hand turn? If that makes sense? That, that would, that would give more birth, as we say in the Navy, uh, to make, to negotiate that left-hand turn off Hanover before they have to pick a lane.
But that, that would, you mean changing Hanover itself?
Nope. You're talking about bringing up the line on Noble for the west.
Make, making that, going from a one, not, not making it an immediate two lane.
Yeah. Um.
I mean, that's, that's a pretty wa-, you know, pretty, pretty wide area to, to kind of adjust after you. Cause to me, the critical point is that Hanover-Noble intersection, if we make that easier to negotiate, I think we hit, we address our biggest vulnerability. Just a thought.
A, a, a left-hand truck, a, a left-hand turning truck, tractor trailer.
It, right. Um, I mean, I mean, the, the only downside is that, you know, um, somebody turning right, going south on Hanover, uh, we, you know, needs to understand there's only one, if you're, there's only one lane to turn into there. To me, that's, that seems like the o- the only thing we'd have to be concerned about uh, that intersection.
Well, there's two, they, they would have two lanes to turn into and, and, and to make then choice of whether to stay in the left lane or, or, or the through lane?
That, 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 that's the way it is now, and that's the way you have it designed. I'm saying if we move that to a single lane, at least partially between Hanover and the turn-in to Chick-fil-A, that, that provides a little bit easier, little bit more buffer between the bike lane and people turning in there. Um, I, I would, I would be open to consider that as an option.
So, so you're saying almost like a funnel, right? Cause that's what I was thinking too, where you're making that left onto Noble into one lane, and then it opens up and then you pick. Cause I see, I see what you're saying, Counselor Hicks, with this. If you make a left and somebody's also making a right and you're both coming into it at the same spot, and I get stuck in that turning lane and then I try to get over.
Mm-hmm.
But Max Spock's part of the work great.
Well, and, and, and to be, to be honest, I mean, it happens now too with, with folks turning in, even though it's a dotted line, and that there's a backup to make a left in the Chick-fil-A or wherever, where people are, are scooting back over. So I see the point of, if you could bump that line to make the turning lane shorter and then funnel cars in and then you pick which way. Cause my, my fear is I don't know how we're gonna educate drivers because it's only paint. So how will I know that I'm in the turn only way? because it's only paint. So how will I know that I'm in the turn-only lane unless I'm looking? If, and if there's cars already there, I don't know, I'm in a turn-only lane, right? If they're covering the arrows and I make that left, I'm just kinda stuck there. That might be a longer discussion than just this project.
I mean, kinda what I'm talking about is what we're doing on Bedford, right? We're funneling everybody in. That's, that's basically what I'm, I'm thinking of, that, that section there is, is the vulnerable area. If, if we make it easier to access that area, um, I think we're safer. Even though that would preclude people from simultaneously taking a left and a right off of Hanover.
Simultaneously making a left and a right. Is that an appropriate way? Or is that dedicated left turn? Yeah, I, I'm, I, I, I'm, I'm not sure that if, when the left turn, uh, signal is, 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 um, providing the left turn off of South Hanover, whether or not. I don't think we, I don't think, um, Southbound can move. I think they have a red light. But I, I'm not sure of that. I need to check.
If there are two lanes, I'm sure people are turning, would.
Oh, you're saying just making a right turn on red?
Right.
No, from Hanover to, to garden. Yeah, I, I would, I would need to look at the, at the traffic signal permit to see what, the way that's set up. Thanks, I, I can't call.
We have, we have traffic engineers on staff.
Uh, we do.
We might be overthinking this a little bit. Um, okay. Any, any other comments, questions? Okay, I'm not sure we, that, after all that, it's entirely clear what we're, what, what we're doing. Uh, but let's, let's assume we're moving forward with this unless we, after that discussion, um, Mark comes back and maybe next week tells us, you know, there, there's an option to do something along the lines of what was just discussed. Does that make sense? Okay, alright. Chief has, Chief wants to play with cars.
I want little cars.
Yeah, okay.
Also remember that signs and lines, if you make lines in the road, that's one thing that is forcible with this. If you lines in the road, signs overhead saying left turn only.
Right.
Just one quick question then, is there any consideration in the additional cost of adding a sign? Like a post over the road with the left turn lane sign there? Like how much would that cost and add to?
Yeah, I, I, if, if we're talking about, um, changing the way that, uh, traffic moves on South Hanover, we would need to, uh, get a Penn Dot concurrent on that.
You know, South Hanover, I mean, coming like, uh, at the Chick-fil-A on Noble Boulevard, a sign announcing as you turn the corner onto Noble, up above that there's a left or, or, you know, do we, do we price that into the budget to add a sign? Um, a nice big visible sign rather than a small sign on the side of the road? And if so, how much would something like that cost?
Yeah, that, that, that would be significant because we would need to have a, um, a very large traffic, uh, signal, uh, pole that's clearly heard, that is able to hang signage on it. Hundred fifty thousand?
And I'm on, I'm on Google Maps. I'm looking at, looking at people turning actually here in the photo, but trying to remember what we have. No turn on red, southbound Monday through Friday, seven AM.
I think it's during school.
Oh yeah, seven AM to eight PM, two, two PM to three PM. Yeah, that's right. So it doesn't, that doesn't fix that problem for us, the way it is currently, except during those hours. Okay. I think we, my, my summary was, was still good? Okay, alright. Then we can move on to Ridge Street Pumping Station?
Alright, uh, very briefly, uh, the Ridge Street Wastewater Pumping Station, uh, is a facility owned by the Borough. It's located at the, uh, southwest, northwest, west, northwest, yeah, northwest corner, uh, of, uh, South Fifth Street and, and, uh, West Ridge Street. Uh, the Borough entered into an agreement with, um, South Middleton Township and South Middleton Township Municipal Authority, uh, two years ago, uh, that called for, uh, the station to be, expanded. Uh, if you go to the next slide, um, so this is a, um, roadmap of the Borough and, um, the Ridge Street Pumping Station is shown as the red triangle, uh, there. Let's see, the, the yellow line on the south is, is eighty-one and the yellow line on the north is, is the turnpike. Um, so the area of, of the Borough of Carlisle that's tributary to the pumping station is, is shaded in blue there. It's essentially the southwest part of the Borough, um, around Hillside, uh, area, flowing east. Uh, the station also serves, uh, South Middleton Township, the, uh, Walnut Bottom Road Corridor of South Middleton Township, and that's shaded in green on, on that map. So essentially South Middleton, south of Route eighty-one. Uh, that corridor in, in South Middleton Township is, um, growing and, uh, they have, uh, uh, sufficient land development occurring there that requires that the facility be expanded to serve that, that new development. And the agreement that Council entered into, uh, with South Middleton and South Middleton Authority called for, um, the Ridge Street Pumping Station to be expanded and for the township to pay for that expansion cost. Uh, we're now at the point where, uh, the design on that has been completed and, uh, bids have been, uh, been advertised and the bid opening is electronically for this Friday. Good Friday. Uh, so at, um, timing of the essence for South Middleton and their developers, uh, the authority and the township have requested that Council, uh, take action on the bids at its meeting next Thursday. Uh, South Middleton Township Municipal Authority meets on Monday or Tuesday of next week. So they indicated that they also will review the bids and they will provide a recommendation to, to the Borough in, in the form of a letter saying, you know, we, we continue to want this project to proceed and we're, you know, we, we won't pay for it. Uh, so I just wanted to, uh, bring that up, uh, so that when this comes forth next, uh, one, uh, next Thursday that, um, you know, there's an understanding here of, of why that's on the agenda.
Any questions? Alright, thank you, Mark. Uh, Counselor Perry, still, still your agenda of rain gardens here?
Um, I have one action item. Um, I move the council award the twenty twenty-three contract for maintenance of rain gardens installed as part of the Carlisle Connectivity Tiger Project to the lower responsive bidder. Land Studies of Lyddas, Pennsylvania in the base amount of seventeen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars.
The motion by Counselor Perry to award the twenty twenty-three contract for maintenance of rain gardens to Lyddas, Land Studies of Lyddas, Pennsylvania, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stube, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The motion passes.
Um, and that concludes my report.
You have grant, grant agreement, yeah, one more.
I'm sorry, I was eager, apparently.
This one we want. We want this one.
Um, Borough Council may authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement and other support documents for the Regional Transportation Plan Implementation Grant received from the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration in the total amount of one million dollars for the Carlisle Connectivity Project North Hanover Street component.
Do you wanna do this as two motions or do you wanna combine the second part?
I guess we can, I can do it in one.
Okay, yeah.
Um, I'll also, uh, make a motion, well, I don't know if I have to say it like that.
Continued motion to.
Continued a motion to adopt the attached resolution given the mayor and Borough Manager's signatory authority for all documents needed associated with the federal grant program.
A motion by Counselor Perry, uh, to authorize me to sign the grant agreement and other supporting documents along with the, the related resolution for the Regional Transportation Plan Implementation Grant. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stube, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, the motion passes. Now, now.
Now, I conclude my report.
Alright, Counsel, Counselor Hicks, Sustainability Community Planning.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I have one, uh, item tonight. I move the Borough Council to approve an ordinance prepared by the Borough Solicitor to amend the code of the Borough of Carlisle with respect to the keeping of chickens.
It's time for the chicken ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor, uh, by Deputy Mayor, sorry. This is a roll call, Madam Secretary, please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
No.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Schultz?
Aye. And the ordinance passes.
Uh, that concludes my report.
Okay. Next is, uh, new business, which there is none on the agenda. It's another opportunity then for public comment. If there's any public comments to be offered, I see none. Uh, and then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.